Steve, can you hear us? Sorry, done? Okay, he's waving. So. Can you hear us, Steve?
I'm sorry.
Okay. So Steve is here remotely? And John Bacon?
Here.
Okay. He just. All right, so we'll see if it's done. Alternatives. But. Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you. You, you have a full. Full court. Full court without your alternates being seated. All right. Perfect. All right, so moving on, we have the scheduling of public hearings, we have the proposed subdivision application of Pistol, Bruach, Holden's LLC for four residential lots. At map twenty dash four, block seventy-two, lot nine, seventeen oh nine Kensington Road. Uh, we have the suggested date of August third. And I'll make a motion to schedule for August third. Okay, Ms. Dorsey has a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion. All those in favor? I suppose so.
Just in case.
Yes. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Okay, so uh, if you are here uh, for uh, under public hearings, we had a subdivision application for uh, Kokomo Brothers. For five lots at forty-six on Wilkes-Allen Road in Somerset. And that is going to be postponed, delayed uh, at the applicant's request, so we will not be discussing that at all tonight. Excuse me. Uh, we have a question regarding the procedure.
Regarding the Kokomo application?
Yes.
Um, is, can we say anything since we were, we are the owners of it?
Yeah, but the hearing's not open. We're, we have.
I thought it was an open hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm wrong. Oh, no, it's not a question of being wrong. I would love to hear your comments. I'm looking forward to hearing your comments. But I can't do it tonight because the hearing's not open. He's already requested that we just move it on to the next agenda and that would be. Is he requesting the next July meeting?
So I was verbally told by counsel. That his counsel request was coming back. Email, yeah. I was just. So. Get the public hearing. As we do to. Post call to the next. Overusing. Extension time.
And that next public hearing is going July twentieth. It's gonna be July twentieth, so when we get to that, it'll be just moved on to the twentieth of July, so you're welcome to stay for that. We're not accepting any testimony, or you can go, enjoy your evening. And we'll see you on the twentieth. And this is John, oh, we hold, hey, fifteen minutes. Yeah, so it's something that happened last night, so your choice is yours, okay? So the Kokomo Brothers and the other one is going to be the application for uh, the nineteen oh six Berlin LLC. And that is going to be for uh. Affordable housing land use. This is item C. Under the public hearings. And that is going to be the. Post text amendments for the Berlin infill that is also going to be uh, not heard or opened today. Uh, the applicant, there was an error. Uh, the uh, legal enforcement. And because of that, we cannot listen to that application today. And that will probably also go to the nineteenth of July as well.
Thank you. Yes. This application for now. They have two, two applications.
Yes, so, so all of them see, with, with encompasses two separate plans. So, yes.
Quick question, these are very vulnerable, they must open by seven eight, so.
In his letter.
Okay, so we're good.
And again. Yep. Right now, we'll just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's big.
All right. So. Yeah, so that's why the resolution is speaking for, so you can stay or you can leave. All right, moving on. For the commission business, we have an importance with section eight twenty-four of the Connecticut general statutes, review recognition for matter. Of installing two solar powered street wells in parking lot at the south end of Brandybee Lane. Um, do you have any? I know that we received some information, they let an action on it.
So, um, I just wanted to want to give you a. And upfront a little bit.
Yep.
So the neighbors of that area have requested. As a parking lot, the. Little better lit. And have gone to both the council meetings as well as first mission meetings and presented before them, so. The town manager as the. Art Department, uh, is the engineering and the council, which. Girl to you, uh. For the improvement on town land. To be reviewed. It, in the package I gave you, it has the. A sample of the exposed light fixture. Uh. Specifically, no, the picture is typical street fixture is thirty feet high, these. We have eighteen feet high, the map there could be your location, um. Specifically, the ones there. You know, where they install them, but, and they're also. Solar powered and a new type of fixture that is. Programmed, so they have during capabilities, so. Remote capabilities, so for instance, if there's issue and the police. The game of the controller, they can raise the limits at that moment because. Five different. In bothers the neighbors, they can be adjusted in real time. Fixed like. So I think it's a really cool picture, he was pretty excited about it.
Yeah.
Uh. We. The installation of a. Lighting in a parking lot. Possible misuse. In judgment, the smallest issue.
Yeah.
Self.
Yeah, and I, I generally did talk with uh, uh, the chairperson for the uh, police commission. Uh, and he was unable to attend tonight. But he encouraged that we seriously look at this, so this has been uh, an issue that's been going on, ongoing for the folks on Brandybee Lane. And then apparently they've been suffering with these people racing up and down the street. And uh, a lot of activity taking place in a darkened area. And it's not good activity. And uh, they're actually becoming concerned over their own general safety because a lot of people coming in are not. And so they're hoping that this is one of the many steps that's gonna be able to level the playing field. So when cops do come or, or they try to carry on or whatever. Um, they're gonna have deterrence along the way. I believe they even put up uh, road strips. Which looks because of speeding problems, they actually put up temporary strokes to slow these people down. Uh, uh, so I, I see it as a positive. Well. Anyway, what's the consensus of the commission?
I'll make a motion to uh, recommend approval of the two solar powered streetlights in the parking lot south end of Brandybee.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Dorsey, we have a sentence by Mr. Zigma for the discussion. All those in favor? Also moved. Moving on, accordance with the eight twenty-four, the general statutes, review recommendations for the project for the construction of sidewalks for Red Road. Or winding middle drive, the Norton Road. On Percival Avenue from Carbo Lane to Percival Field. On Robbins Road from Town Drive to Timberwood Road. On Kensington Road from Norton Road. To Steeple View Drive and on Norton Road east and west of Cole Lane. All right, so we have another recommendation. So I will admit in your package, um, the summary speech. Face of it, it probably was a bit confusing because there were several town councils. Uh, items related to that, uh, most recent being. Unfortunately, was described, but uh, was in both places. Does the town council before was recommended. As, um, and the, I think the top item actually is. Hope it's more positive recommendation for the convention, but we needed to get it into the town council's agenda before your meeting, so it all. If you don't provide a favorable recommendation, we'll change. But, um, the request for the public influence is associated with the connectivity. Just install missing. Most of you will recall the. P O C D and through the requirements that are included in subdivision regulations as well. zoning regulations, the. Has a history of identifying sidewalks. Age rate leakages, particularly in that difficult areas. Filling missing. And raise a gradient of space. So, yeah. Or the favorable recommendation. All right, move to commission.
From north, Steve will build drive, Steve will.
Steve will.
But the. By the street.
West side of the road, on Norton, I, from Norton, there's. And then. One of our houses, full view. For the holder. Such as there's a missing.
Yes.
Going in the gap of the. Your railroad. I can bring it up. I believe what. Engineering. Been substantially done. Read into it.
Oh, it's always. I know it's on.
Right next to it. It's older, right here, they. Yeah, the, in the park, between Percival Park and the.
Yeah, so it'll go up one side. Shut you very pretty good. Okay. Thank you. Slow right, here's Kensington Road. So here's Kensington Road, here's Steeple View.
So right at the top, you see Norton Road, this white line, you can see as a sidewalk. For you, it comes up. As it's separate, assuming included in the Stephen View subdivision. And this ends where those last. So it's this. Very long, right, yes.
Thank you. Any others you want, you want me to pull up the far book? Uh, no, that's okay, now that I'm. Searching for the law. All right, um, so do we have a motion? All right, thank you, Ms. Dorsey. I'll make a motion for a favorable recommendation for the project for the construction of sidewalks on four Red Road. On Percival Avenue from Polo Lane to Percival Field. On Robbins Road, Town Drive to Timberwood Road. On Kensington Road from Woodford Road to Steeple View Drive and on Norton Road east and west of Cole Lane. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hammond. For the discussion, all those in favor? Close a move. Next one is opening discussion on cannabis uses, public survey discussion. And uh, we see a public comment regarding cannabis. Happy looking. What? So, uh. You'll recall, as previously discussed, the P N Z asked staff to find the opportunities to have a good discussion with public. Um. For further comment on. How to proceed with cannabis. Both regulations and directions for staff. And so. Determined that. Planning zoning meetings would be a. Place to happen, happen. Uh, so. A conversation with the mayor. To this agenda so that. Opportunities comment. It's not a public hearing, a text amendment, but it is. Building. Agenda to re, we receive public comment. We don't have. Do regulations. And then another, uh. Another. Way to garner feedback from the public was the idea of posting a simple and short survey. Um. As a planner, I think they get more honest and open responses to the cannabis users and the types of cannabis uses through a. Uh. A. Anonymous survey that. The public where. They've often reported, so. They can say neighbors, they may. Neighbors and friends, they may have been less likely to participate in those public meetings that we've already helped. Remember. A few residents, but. Mountain attention, there then. Feedback that they can issue. And the town agent was holding for. Uh, several other communities use digital surveys. We'd like to use those. Station Corporation Council also has experience with them, and you would like to. Use some of those to. Develop a survey, you can post it on the period of time, but with a flexible. Through social media and what it takes ages to. To. Some feedback. If you think that's the direction you want to take. Um, again, and asking the public, I would also suggest that I continue. Repotings again on the next, you know, for public comment. Uh, I think by the end of the month, we should have a proposal that we post for what? The meeting deserve, uh. For a tax amendment. Amendments prior to the cannabis. Yeah, we may have to put an extension on that because I know that we get everything collected by them. So we may have to actually. Um, so if we do, if we do an online survey, like through the town website. Uh, would we have a way of knowing whether, uh. Like, but I. One person would go in and like, just keep taking the survey and saying, yeah.
Yeah, usually if we use a tool like Survey Monkey. All the others, that's the one, the town. It usually has a. System or. Same computer. It's as secure as it can get.
Oh, I just wouldn't want somebody going. Loading in a certain way. Sleeting. But the other thing too is that if you do the survey, people, I think, need to understand because when we talk about cannabis, um. There is a way to adopt it, we don't have to have it in town. We don't have to sell it, we don't have to grow it, and I think it, had that has to be, instead of people deciding. Uh. Where they're gonna put it, I think they need to know that you don't have to.
So I, I do think that is one of the ways he was. Performed survey, and I didn't brand that same. But, um, for instance, we have the. Really, we, we distributed the.
Yeah. And it shouldn't be complicated, it should, you know, it should just be the yes or no. So, so let's talk about that a little bit, just for the record, Jennifer. Uh, so you received deep burners, these branderies, man's fields, and west. Um, and, you know, certainly we can do an introduction and that, that's the interest in here. We need to buy it too, so we can, we can put together a draft. And, I mean, as you've seen, I mean, these, these are very simple. Guilford, I tried to get my hands on Guilford, I haven't been able to do that, difference was maybe it was a little bit longer, but it was also similar. Um, so the question becomes, you know, what do you want to ask about? You know, do you want to ask simply about, um, you know, a dispensary slash retail, dispensary meaning. Remember, when, when, when Bula passed, it was for dispensaries and then production piece was producer, those were the two licenses. And then when they passed adult use, then we had the additional, the additional line licenses, but dispensary. And user still also in. That, that regulation as well, so those licenses are still available. Um, but, you know, then we have the hybrid bodies to the power of use and then the regulations. But, um, you know, do you want to just ask, you know, folks' opinions, like, for example, if you look at these ground, we can want a cannabis production facility down, right? So, um, you know, we'll do some sort of introduction that will create things for people, so when, you know, people understand what we're asking about. But, um, and then the next question is, would you want a cannabis dispenser? In town, right? Um, so those have specific meaning based upon the law, um, so maybe we would put. Um, production, cultivator, because that's. You know, the new, the new license for production. Um, and then for dispensary, we thought. Retail, retail, well, it's, I, I think it's, I think it's retail, hybrid retail, um, someone would use them, you know, and, but we would do an introduction. And I think you make a good point, I think that, uh, but. The numbers, the last time I checked, and I have to admit, I haven't checked them. I, I was literally checking like every couple of weeks to see, uh, you know, where we were in terms of numbers and, and, and probably going back. I would say a couple of months ago, only half of the municipalities had taken any. Um, many still have more to their base. We probably had, um. You know, thirty to. Thirty to forty that had produced some sort of permitted use. Um, regulation allowing some sort of permitted use. Um, and probably about twenty, I'll write for additions of everything. Uh, the most common, tho, those municipalities in York, I remember this because I think I told you this way back when. Most municipalities who acted immediately, uh, you know, once adult use was passed. Um, most of them allowed cultivation in industrial areas, that was pretty common. Uh, cultivation and then, and micro cultivation, you know.
Yes, but there are two parts of cultivation, isn't there, the growing aspect and then it has to be moved to a packaging facility, you know, that, you know, there's. Yeah, I, I, I'll start here. This license definition to you again, but that, you, you.
But that's something.
Yeah.
I think they need to know the differences between.
I think as part of that introduction, as. We would. Like the. Basic definition of the different. Categories. As, as we could. The, the styles, because it is a lot of information that we made. To the. To the statute that's. You know, complete information as well, which I would. Like to see the intervention. Be glued where some. Yeah. It's certain. You think. They got. I don't, we would want to give. Introduction as to what those different uses. Be important. Do cannabis page, yeah. We could do cannabis page. Or we could certainly just direct, um, to the consumer protection. Say, which has. A lot of legal use.
Yeah, I think that's. Well, that's sort of. It may be, you know. People may be. More comfortable with having a page on their term of play.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah. If they needed it, just. If they can go on. But I just am sort of wondering, like, are there certain uses that you all agree? That you don't even. Like, do you want to keep it simple, simple and ask about? Dispensary slash retail, production, sales, cultivation. Um, but, you know. That's something that. A couple of the, the towns did in the surveys that you have. Samples, so. Simply deciding between production versus dispensary. Um, so.
Okay, in other words, just do. Growing and not.
Growing.
Sell. And selling and that's it.
Growing and selling and that's it. Um, the other thing is, and you'll see in. A number of prohibitions, I don't know if those were circumvented, I do have all of them. But, uh, there has to be an exception for the actual delivery and transport. Like, you could restrict where, uh, delivery location is and hours and so on and so forth, but, but there is. Um, a prohibition within the act that disallows you from outright prohibiting. Uh, delivery and transport of cannabis. So, um, I do just want to point that out, that's something that I noticed that a lot of towns did not account for. In the prohibition that they passed, I just recently did a prohibition and it does have exemption pursuant, um, to that portion of the act. So. So you could restrict, like, if there was a delivery service that wanted to locate within your. So you could restrict, like, if there was a delivery service that wanted to locate within your town. Um, you could restrict where it was located and its hours and so on and so forth. But you cannot restrict the actual act of delivery. There's a portion of the act that disallows that.
And when we talk about delivery, we're talking about the people who are. The leaves are already harvested. It's like a processing plant to prevent it for sale. Is that what you're talking about? What you're talking about?
An actual delivery service that delivers cannabis.
They'll deliver it to your house.
Yeah, but I'm I'm saying that. So the service would be. You can't. Prevent it from being in your town. Except when you're, you can't prevent the actual. Last.
Well, no, I mean, I'm talking about the driving, but. Where it's where it's. It was strictly a delivery service business. You can place prescriptions where it's located. And so forth, but you can't prohibit the. Delivery as. You can't prohibit the act of transport.
Exactly.
You can have an exception, say, you're not going to get it this.
Yes. But now about our decision. This commission is just basically, she was collecting information and having. And and decided, so we're gonna opt out. Just okay. But but depending upon. We feel this the direction sounds. And the other thing we could introduce. To people too, that people may not be aware, but they should be because they're personal thoughts about it. But homegrown did take effect. When I said, yes. Yeah. So now people are able to grow a certain. So. Yeah, on the street plan, so we're set. For personal. So.
I thought it had as well is um, I mean, let's start right out. I wonder if it's helpful to to. In it will. Might not be opposed to people using marijuana, but might just not want it in their town. So if it's. Available in neighboring towns, maybe that might be a piece of information they might. Well, I appreciate that.
Because it's like.
Where it's close.
Yeah, and that's the whole. So for instance, mentioning that there's hybrid facility in Maryland. That's what you're suggesting.
Yeah.
But anyway, yeah, we uh, we need to. Some decided. And I think we just suggested. And would you like us just to draft a survey for the. Yeah, you get a review.
Yeah.
But maybe put, yeah, you know, we'll kind of include and everything in terms of and then and then you could just. Decide to take out which one to.
Yeah.
That sound good?
Yeah, as you say, oh, let's say that. Formula.
Yes.
That direction to us. Just just for conversation purposes, let's say that. Or you just thought that we didn't want to go. When is that discussion? After the survey, prior to the survey?
So any prohibition would be, I've I've been recommending from the start, prohibition should be a task amendment. So um, if in fact you decide you would direct staff and myself to draft prohibition language. Um, I do have permission language that I I could share with you when when, yeah, I'll make a copy of that. So I I recommended language.
All right.
Come back to John's point earlier. Thing uh, we won't be getting the survey to review until the next meeting. August is the meeting after when our. Moratorium runs out. So I think that we should have an extension on our moratorium. For our next meeting, so we can go through this whole process.
Yeah, well, just talking about that, um, you know, if you're going to go forward with the survey, say you approve the survey copy at the next meeting. And we'll and we'll get, we can get into, you know, week before, and it's not only very simple, very sad, let's show what I want to do that. Um, because we did the affordable housing survey, so we're kind of seasoned. But um, because we saw a lot of talking about. Um, but um, if if we had, you have it for the twentieth and you've had, you know, a week or so to review it and gather your thoughts, if you give us a direction. You know, that's yeah, that meeting of what's very specifically what's to take out, we then so we can finalize it. Get it distributed. How long would you like that survey to be on the street? Do you want to give people two weeks? Do you want to give people a month or so? What are your thoughts?
Two weeks. They should be able to do it two weeks. It's on, it's right there. It's on the computer. Also do a lot into the town website. Take the survey.
Do you want it on the town website only? Distributed to the websites. For all classes and all those other websites.
So I have a list. The distribution of the affordable housing application. Um, and that affordable housing, Darby rather, only called it housing, alright. Um. Yeah, I have a list of all the organizations in town, so you know, we did. We hit a lot of churches and stuff with that too. Um, I think we we went to Word of Ed. Um, but school's not in session. Right, so that's not an option for us. But you would necessarily do that. But uh, we published an ad. Twice in the newspaper. Um, so we did a flyer that got posted in uh, town buildings. So there was, you know, there was quite a quite a bit. There was a strategy on it to.
Yeah.
To try, you know, to. So have as much opportunity for people to be aware of this. And you had a good number. You had hundreds of people participated, which your consultant was very happy with. So. It was just sort of a major people.
So we tried so much. For the public point of concern. But. Recent. For those. It wasn't quite as. Broad. Intuition, but. Economic development. B T's. It wasn't.
If the if the label age is twenty one. They use cannabis, should the participants in the survey, survey? Be over twenty one?
Not on given.
I don't know. I guess we ask the birthday. Are you?
Well. I would, I would not want a bunch of tails or trolls or. You would, yeah, to answer the question. Then it's just that life. But. So, but I think it could be when. And you're a resident.
Yeah, so so. You can. Sort of. Maybe there is money involved now. Um, you know, we we didn't do that in a thousand survey. Um, we didn't do a free P O C D survey. Um, and I don't, I mean, economic development survey that's been done. Would have used it.
I I'll just draw the question.
Yeah, so so the way that the way that Survey Monkey works is, you know, it's not going to allow somebody to fill the survey twice from the same. Um, yeah, the same N P address from the same device.
Okay.
Well, they won't be able to access it again. So and if the devices were connected, if you have an iPad. The cell phone and a laptop, like computer, CPU, that are all connected, you can't get in from any of them. Once you complete it, you complete it. That's it. So that's the way it works. We have some towns. Um, gone a little bit on and and actually hired, there there have been a few. Um, but I think there, you know, there's a. I I would think it's probably ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars to do that. Okay. But let's go back to the extension. So. We've come full circle. So if uh, if next meeting is July twentieth, then we get the survey. We're gonna have it up for two weeks and then I think we should go to the end of September, maybe October. I mean, because we'll probably decide before then. But I don't want to, I don't want it to fall. Perhaps. Perhaps. So I'd rather have more time than we need. Especially sometimes the way our our schedules run here. Some days we're just five down and other days we get a light load. So it just, we don't know. We don't know. So I'd rather. Caution. So.
I I can see us getting stumped by August.
No, I don't think so. September's probably. All right.
We got a busy couple of meetings coming up after this today.
So do we need a motion to make an extension awards? Or do you have to be noticed? You're just gonna think, need to draft. For. Extension. Hopefully that extension is going to. That extension will have to be a public area item and.
Um, okay. So I'm ready to march.
The public, so on the agenda, we do have a couple of comment with regard to, and it would be much like those public forums and the handle. Yeah. Opinions of people as to whether they feel that. Now should or shouldn't. Or direction the town should go in to provide direction to the commission so the commission can. Be responsive.
To the.
To the public.
Do they have to use the microphone for good, for annual address for the record? Is there anyone here in the public who wishes to address the question regarding this? Item?
It's. It's accepting. Again, you guys.
Yeah. So anyone want? Share their thoughts about it? Of cannabis, the use of cannabis. On the field, selling it. At Prosege.
Prosege before you kind of. I'm thinking. To make the delineation between the retail and the growing facility, or should say growing slash delivery. To find out where people are concerned, two very distinct things, and there's very different opinions on them. It sounds to me, previous conversations of this commission maybe isn't as excited about the retail idea because to maybe get the public's feedback on that. And if so, maybe take that piece, split it completely off and then have a bigger discussion on the growing facility.
Yeah, I think.
Because I think my own opinion is there's less. Less of that from the public for growing facilities, like a manufacturing facility, it's going to very well, uh, security and the life. Jobs and tax dollars, low retail. Don't know what the.
Yeah, well, I think that that's what we were hoping with the direction of survey too.
Absolutely.
Is let them know, we're just not asking yes or no, but we're looking at it at different levels. And one level might be acceptable to the citizens and one may not. But we need to define that, as you said, and I agree.
Absolutely. And I think that's because it really is two distinct things. And if there is a. Opinion, so if you go, if you really don't want this, great, that that then gives this board and planner and town attorney.
Yep.
A path at that point, which I think is good, because right now I think it's very open ended, but having definitive ideas would be helpful, especially to if. Planner or myself get phone calls, we can also also assist people and say, okay, great, yeah, this is something that we're not interested in the town, or you know what? We'd be happy to talk to you.
Yeah.
Once we have that feedback from.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Want to give us some feedback while sitting here. Okay, no one else had a sort of time to share at this time. All right, so hearing none, um. Do we have anyone online who wishes to address this issue?
So it's me and Steve.
You and Steve?
That's it. That'd be why they're Steve.
Okay. Moving on, three ninety eight channel highway garden center uses. It seems like we're gonna be breathing some of the life into the old Johnson. Is there a?
So maybe you'll fix and have to sit like you have, but the. Who has to be. That this onto the agenda. At an upcoming meeting. Michael's phone further to step in, but just as a reminder, I don't have to distribute it again, although I will. Um, we made out this little packet for you. Reminds you of some of the garden center. History. So. Garden center. Uses in. Uh. They are twenty one seven, I believe that is. Um. The president. And then in your limousine regulations, acceptance initiation for garden supply center. Um, this this special. Uh, subject to eleven U and then eleven. They. Considerate. Uh, the. The second page that was distributed is from June twenty third sixteen. With a commitment at a time. Property at that time. Proposal for additional. Items to be sold and the commission came up with a general. Lots of things to increase to garden centers. Um. They the. Previous to this and a couple of years previous to it, found that. Gift shop and it had jewelry. Things that would not be garden related. Yes, uh. So some of that. And then there was a priority to expand. To include. Items such as dog food and. And some other items that's involved in that, such that resulted in the twenty sixteen list. Um. But I'm distributing this now, so if you have. You have it, uh, I will. For their compensation. And you know, the applicant has, uh, this can give you more information. Things. People aspiring as to using the property. So. Like. To two thousand twenty three, if it's relevant or not, you may try and build this to it or you may not, and. Two, two thousand twenty three, both businesses. Today. Sir.
Yeah, and I do remember this, you know, this list, one of the things about the jewelry or candles. Candles. Being sold there and uh, there was, so there's a lot of angst about it. But the bottom line is that a garden center. Uh, especially a patient like that, you're competing with your home people and loads and everything else like that. So it has to be able to gear itself toward the different seasons. Uh, it has to be able to take on. The the theme of those seasons, you know, fall. We have Thanksgiving and a lot of this is done with some of the jewelry that's locally made. Purchased from the. And what is actually local artisans that would. Show there and then at their jewelry set, but a lot of it was. For the seasons, you know, Christmas decorations, Thanksgiving, spring, Easter, bodies, you know. So and and I think the garden center. Especially because it competes with the big box, has to be able to rely on drawing people in. Using. Different ways other than just plants. I think so. But I do remember that was stricken off the list. But you may want to revisit that to make sure that if you do invest. I always need to go in there and show.
I think that's what they. All right.
Yeah.
Consider other accessory. are, or consider what other accessory. You know, spike it.
Yeah.
So market it.
All right, so you're not looking for any action on this tonight?
No, I'm gonna be, I've been with them, they
Our next meeting is gonna go material.
Yeah. Fallen into taxi. We had a lot of inquiries about this, so that we've been dealing for a long time. Staten is reactions were, well, that. So we, we would like we have seasons for a lot. It's the special residential zone. This is like the churches and not for politics, I mean, I have the regulations but it's, it's the list of garden supply centers is one. That's even not, I don't know.
Just a comment that I can piggybacking on what just mentioned with respect to the garden centers like at the depot or Lowe's, um I have always been perplexed about the fact that of, of list as specific as this she was ever created within this particular property. Because I don't know of any other retail business that we ask for an itemizing list of, um, what specific products of business is gonna sell. And, um I, uh, what bothers me, I think, when you have some, uh, small business like this trying to these are also competing with the grocery stores. Grocery stores are selling pot and plates, seasonal items, sunflowers that and cards, all those other things, as people tend to go to the big store because everything's convenient and maybe they've got a lost leader to get people in the works. It's much harder for these firms actions to be uh, you know, to limit, to be so limiting or to be so specific.
Yeah. All right, well, that discussion will continue.
amended the definition. So that, you know, to a a list that was the determination of the convention as to what it meant. To see the correct.
Okay, on to the public hearings. Do you have a call for the public hearings and check the time for me?
Or do I have anything to make sure?
Well, I mean, maybe we Yeah, also we really have to know this.
Yeah, but it, Fran did put it in and that world for me, I just didn't realize it was the same. Also you don't have to read something. You don't have to read me.
I'm from Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. Burling Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, July sixth, twenty twenty three at seven P M in the Town Council Chamber. Burling Town Hall, forty Kennedy Road, Burling, Connecticut. Each party may join the meeting and participate in public hearing in person or remotely at provided a law. Hey, subdivision application of M. Cattle Fairwist for its three residential lot at map eleven dash one, block one twenty seven, lot sixteen, two thirty five, Weatherfield Road. The applications and related meeting materials are available at Planning and Zoning Department, Burling Town Hall, forty, Kensington Road, Burling, Connecticut. Dated this twentieth day of June, twenty twenty three at Burling, Connecticut. Brian Robyn, Secretary, Burling Planning and Zoning Commission. Newport and Harold, legal notices slash classified advertising date of publication, Saturday, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, Monday, July thirty, twenty twenty two.
Okay, um, thank you, Brian. So the third item that we have, it's a subdivision application for Coco, Coca-Cola Brothers for the five lots at lot forty six, forty sixty, block one forty two, one seventy, where it's on road, and two forty three Somerset. And, um, I know that he's asked for this to be postponed, so can you have a motion? Yes, I do. Um, make a motion to postpone uh July twentieth. Uh, Ms. Jersey has a motion, do we have a second?
No seconds.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Further discussion, all those are better, five, as possible. On Tuesday, before you move on, uh with regard to that matter, it should be noted for the record that Attorney Genofrio did correspond with Attorney Ryder. Attorney Ryder did agree, uh, that reopening of the public hearing should be postponed to the next meeting. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And the next is going to be, we have to go right to B, right? Subdivision application of P. C. Forall Fairwoods with three residential lots at, they have, they have four, block one twenty seven, lot sixteen, two thirty five, Weatherfield Road. Okay. So, oh, all right, how are you doing?
Good, how are you doing? It wasn't before her.
Um, yeah, just, yeah. Just turn the probably can't, and that because of the young
Do we, don't, I do.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, yeah, I was gonna pick up the screen and sit.
I think I can be ten thousand more.
Right?
Yes.
We'll call on you.
Good evening. My name is Jacky Martin with J L Survey. We'll get a two focal prepared right. Here represent my client on a three lot subdivision. Well. Um, what we have is a, uh existing lot, it's, uh, one point eight acres of land, an existing house on it. Has a septic system and a well, the septic is failed, the well is failed. Both not unusable. And, uh, we're looking to, um, to improve all this by doing a three lot subdivision and extending some sewer and water, and I'll go through that whole. Um, the, the lot I think, I don't think that, if you're, your district goes back, this, this was pretty, these lots were approved in, um nineteen ninety five. But the lots that we're looking to do tonight were already approved once before, the, um Yeah, uh, this is the old
it went for into the like
world. Uh, this is the original subdivision, uh, the lots that we're working on, the parcel of land is right here. This is what was approved in nineteen ninety five. Uh, for whatever reason, the homeowner decided not to go forward with that development, probably Uh, so now we're coming before you to, to do that. And this I like the like piece. This is the, uh, basically the three lots, uh, that we're proposing. This is the site plan. The original parcel broken up, basically the same as the original, like, uh, two thousand ninety five. So what we're proposing is to put, keep the existing house, keep the existing, existing house here. Uh, put in two new houses and, um, we, we've been before wetlands. One, one of the things that wetlands have actually because the, particularly this, this lots here, because of the wetland back here, it's, uh, uh but, uh, it's, it's gotta, it's, it's gotta be in that location, if you will, and yet we can't be moving it back any further. Can't pull it up a little bit.
Well, I can say, I know, I did find that I scanned the black and white version that we have, we do have a color. He had the board in person, you know, but I do the white version, the screen for
Um.
It's all
Let's start off with the sewer and water.
All right.
There is no, the sewer is, the existing sewer is down here, a cobblestone. The sewer manhole, the stuff coming up, and the water is also located down that. What we're proposing to do is, uh, put a forest bank system in for these three lots, all three lots would be working off a forest bank. The, uh, sewer and the, uh sewer and the water would, would start off in the, in the middle of the road and then just they would transition back out of the road and come up and through the grass for both of those. Um, the, uh, the way uh, and, and in that way that we can, we can do less disturbance to the road and, and still maintain our utilities. Um, the, uh the other thing with the, when we were in wetlands, the neighborhood came in, they had a lot of good comments about, uh, drainage blocks and, and, uh um, water conditions and such. So what we did was, uh, a storm sewer. We, we were proposing to put a, a French drain across the front of the property to pick up the water that's coming down. But the way the, the grade is out here is, it's that it's, it's still the grade this way and this way to existing catch basins over here, um, catch bases, which it goes off into the conservation east road on the side. Um. What we've done on grade wise and we've gone through the wetlands process is we've come up with, uh changing the grade to the existing driveway, there just driveway goes down, we're bringing it up so that it's a positive drain drain out so that the driveway won't allow water to come down into it, so bring it that grade up. Um, let me jump to one other thing. Uh, we're, we're gonna ask you not to put sidewalks in. So we got a way to sidewalks. I'm watching, what you're doing all over town, so, um Well, we have a way of a buddy sidewalk over here. Help me, can you tell us what you want to do with that?
So we'll get, we'll get the
But first, let's see, where you come with the options.
All right, so
Yeah, it's a good boss.
Yeah, so there, there, the houses are slabs on grade, we're not putting basements in. Um, we're, we are bringing the grade up so that we, we're putting Caltech drainage chambers in for both, uh, houses to take it to, to affect the, uh roof drains and some, uh, grading, draining, and both these lots. Um, we're also, there's an existing six inch pipe in the back here, we're, we're, we're proposing to change that also to a larger pipe to help protect this property.
Um, Jeff, what's that, what's that six inch pipe for, the wall in the back?
Uh, I think, I don't it, it's been put in, whether it was by neighbor, by the developer, or anywhere, but this is a six inch pipe to help carry the water out of, away from this property over here, over into the system. One of the things, um, on the block, there's two, there's a conservation, thirty thirty five foot conservation easement on this side and a, um, another restriction on that side. This side over here is, uh, now it doesn't allow tree cutting. I cover on this, uh, restriction, and over here, it's a, uh, conservation easement that the language is, uh, conservation easement, the owner prohibited from building, grading, excavating or tree trim removal, except for the necess- necessity to maintain the, uh, the course of the water. So the, so the drainage system has to continue. One of the things that we, we, when we get into, uh, the discussion of wetlands was that this area is really filled up with a lot of junk, there are some pipes, there's a lot of dead trees, it's not blocking the way the system works, so it was determined that the, uh prior to anything, the, the town would work with the applicant, go out, walk the site, determine how to clean it up without damaging, you know, integrity of the site, would clean everything out of there. And then that would have to be cleaned up and approved by the town before we're allowed to get a building permit on any of the lots. So they, they'd have to clean that domain up. Unfortunately, we had a really ugly thing happen that the, the owner had some, hired some people to clean the bushes around their yard and then dumped all the bushes into the conservation easement, which we didn't even know about, would be found out at that public hearing. It was immediately taken out, so the applicant is really truly wants to, you know, to, uh, clean that area up. So that's, that's a condition of the approval is that this has to be cleaned up so that this, uh, drainage system will work. Um. Be, obviously, the septic system that's on the ground, the region feels would have to be taken out by license, so a tractor that, uh, has a license into that works, can't just be object an area, just don't enter, take it out. Um. The, uh they also put in, they put in a, a yard drain over in this lot to pick up water that's shedding off this, over this, the rate, this rate goes off into this lot over here, will not pick up water, and also carry that into the, uh, the, uh, the chambers. Our drainage system, I believe, I think it's programmed, is twenty five year storm, it's delivered, designed to a hundred year storm, it's really over, it's covered design. Uh, because of the, you know, taken into concern with the neighbors for saying. Um. What else we got? Trees, we're putting street trees in. The, we do have a, uh, we had, uh, George Logan do our wetlist, and he came up with the whole uh, formula plantings and maintenance, it's gonna be done, this whole procedure. Jim Horrible had us put all the, uh, planting list and all, all that requirements all on the plan.
All right, so that wetlands area that you just pointed out, is that wetlands or conservation?
It's, it's wetlands, um. Here's what happened. This, this, uh, this subdivision, including all the houses around it, was the original subdivision, was approved before there was a wetland regulation. So these houses were built prior to wetlands. Sure, okay. So then this property was built, it's a lawn area, and it's, it's mowed, it's been filled, I think, I didn't think, was there eighteen inches of filled over the
Eighteen inches.
It was eighteen inches filled over the wetlands that they were able to find down below. So theoretically what was done to the wet was done legally, it was filled in because of, of, at the time. You know, I used to smoke, you know, smoking burns, you know better, but so, um that, in through the process of that, we all determined that we will, we will improve this wetlands and bring it back to original state. By doing that is, George Logan picked, so we're doing it plantings and schedule, gotta be done and maintained and, and, uh, also be reviewed by the town periodically. So that was part of the condition that we're doing with that weather there. Um, we're not, we're, we're doing grading in the buffer area, which is allowed. On that lot, the other lots don't have any, any issues with the wetlands. Electrical, it's electrical on, on the poles, we're carrying that and probably overhead. And, uh
Sorry, the electrical is gonna be over here or?
Well, I'm not sure, Stevens.
Well, I, um, use
Oh, it's gonna be
If they're, if they're in the street and get it. Yeah.
I know that, uh, one of the problems I had with, um, doing a poll before you did, I was doing the survey. Um, the, there's a pole right over here, built by cobblestone. And you can see that this is all underground, so I know that utilities go under, and I was hoping to get marking, they said you can't get a mark unless you can work. So, so, uh, we know that before we start, we're gonna have to do a markup to find out where the, the utilities are. So, so we know that before we start, we're gonna have to do a markup to find out where the, the utilities are and they, they're underground, but they don't, that subdivision. Well. That's pretty much it.
Okay, so they're gonna keep the existing house, but then you have fifty foot right away to a garage.
No, it's not a fifty foot right away, it's just basically. The driveway, the existing driveway just going backwards. So, you know, that's the rear yard.
But you're, you're gonna have the garage all the way back?
It's still there. It's existing.
If it were put in the G I S, just maybe get a better.
Yeah, I'm gonna see when the, see when the. Yes, go right ahead.
I think of the right side yesterday and. The lot on the right hand side. Notice a lot of bonding, right, and from the ball down. Etching, that hedging edge back home there. And on the side, no, on the other side, the right hand side. When these houses should they be built, anything wanna concern us as far as additional water going behind? Into the other neighbors behind that lot? Because there is a lot of water there now and it's quite nice with you, when it's open up for sale, my husband and I went and looked at it. And we walked around on it and it was pretty wet on both sides, not just the, so the left side, the right side was wet, but the left side was also.
Did anybody go by it tonight?
No, we're here.
So the answer is yeah, there, and again, the. Meaning, one of the gentlemen, I believe, with, with this house back here, said there was seven inch water. We do, we do, there's also plumbing over here. This morning, there was very little, there's small, there's still some water, small amount of, but thank you for the consideration, welcome, just had the. My neighbor and we had, you all saw, I'll throw it at her and then three inches of rain in an hour. I have a boat in West Street, so, the Connecticut river is up six feet. Right, that's how much these stones affect, but yes, we did have the puddling. And for the most part, the puddling is gone, so. I, I remember asking this gentleman over here, I said, all right, you have a puddle, where does, where does it go? You know, it's there, but it's there for a day or so, then. And he said, well, it goes this way. It goes up, it drains.
It goes. So it doesn't drain to the road?
Well, it drains off the time that it gets a drainage off. So it's, it's the original subdivision design.
So is it, is there a culvert there?
No.
The back? Yeah, the lots. Alright, there's a swale back there, you said?
Why go to address them? My name's Andy Sehoga. For Washington, working the same site. What happened is originally before the subdivision, those lots were flat, they trained from the road back. And this way. So in two thousand four, there was no bonding there, there was no problems. Owners put in our variety for screening and it built up a burn. It's a nine inch burn or seven inch burn. It varies, goes from the nine inches to three feet. So basically, when they put that in, they caused this flooding, flooding problem, temporary flooding property on this lot. So whenever the water goes over the burn, it flows down the way it used to be and it goes away. So that neighbor was complaining that there's a puddle on this lot as opposed to this lot. Complaining, I, it burned, causing a problem. So that's where the bonding is. But the soils are good enough that occasionally it happens, but it drains. So the soil itself will drain. And drain this way and go. What we're proposing to do to address that is we have a. A curtain drain that goes, a French drain that goes all the way from the front that way. This part of the road, right now, drains across this lot. You look at it, it's like a stream going this way, which. Adds to the responding problem. So our proposal, this French drain will carry this water down into the town drainage system over here. So our proposal benefit is that these property owners, well, they'll dry up their lots. They'll dry up this lot and this lot because the water will be taken up to the site into the town drainage. The town drainage drains out that it's locked, that it's over here. So all the uphill area drains onto this lot. It goes right through there. So that's why we directed this. So. Our proposal will drain, help dry these lots out. The other thing is by putting sewer connections and bringing, taking sewage from this area, like this house. And down through the Madabassin Treatment Plant. Right now, there's a septic system and all the other drainage goes into this fellow's drainage. So our proposal will help to dry out his lot. Because a similar thing happens at this, our divided area here, but there's a drain that's. Automatic takes it out. So this one drains easier. And this rain, this one, there's no outlet because it just blocked the, the natural drainage. So when this subdivision was made, there was no burn there, you just put it in there and it's causing this problem.
So when you have it, so we just, so when you have it draining forward towards the road?
It drains, everything is draining that way.
It drains that way now, so you're gonna catch it in back and then somehow you're gonna get it forward to the road?
The drainage of the, of weather spilled road, half of it goes this way, half of it drains into a system and then it goes back that way. So we're gonna catch this part. And it, it, it goes this way across this lot and we're gonna go into this curtain drain.
If you look at the, the grade, it is a white split rail fence out there and, and that. Which might be a lot, looks like that. So what we're doing, we're proposing behind that. In that area, we're gonna put this, the difference between a French drain and a curtain drain. Curtains range, you put your, put your stone, you put pipe, put block, all that, then you backfill the house all and nobody sees it. French drain. Is stone all the way up to the top, it's exposed, so it's working right from the very. Dirt and always going in and nothing obstructing it or. Just putting it to the ground or putting it for. In a sense, and, and we have the grade to go.
We have this French drain, stone all the way up to the top, there's the road, it'll go this way, a pipe. Pull the side and it'll also help drain. The, both, both sides and it, it's also stops the groundwater. From that goes under the road and into these lots, so drainage of these upper properties. Then to go from soil down the road and this curtain drain had both the surface and the groundwork.
How many of those curtains? To the wall?
Just one. That's, that's, that shows an eight inch pile. You're gonna see pipe. Your drain pile, filled with stone. And then we're also curling it around, we're here also to help pick up the water on the side of the driveway, that, and the driveway drops off. Was this lot?
This curtain drain here allows for any other drainage. So this actually helps reduce the amount of brown water, drainage water going down to these, these, these lots.
Yeah, I know you're asking for a wave around the sidewalks, would that, is that one of the reasons why would that drain impact having a sidewalk in front of properties?
Well, the other utilities also wanna be fitted in here, so when you wanna get out of, if you have a sidewalk. It's a little tough.
It, it could be helpful, if you could tell me right now, how do you feel about sidewalks?
I could, I could, I could tell you. That the, the old subdivision's got, got sidewalks. And there's sidewalks further down, where the road, that's another connection to the puzzle. That's what.
So that's what I did also discuss with him. We didn't see that it would be the criteria or whether there is sidewalks that are up to this point and. Stafford feels that the situation should not be being concerned. Okay, I discussed it as well with yesterday.
Okay, so originally, very good, so we know that. Going back to your question. The way sidewalks are put in grade wise, you've got a six inch brown road, gutter, perfect six inch sidewalk is three inches above. The back of sidewalk is three inches above the top of curb are basically at the same grade as brown on your road. So. Again, now, if, because you're making us put sidewalks in, that sidewalk will also act as a buffer. Because now you've got, you've got an area that's, you know, we've got the slope going, we're gonna be handling that off. It's gonna be, the back of the walk's gonna be higher than the curb, it's gonna be, so it's all gonna be back washing. Back out to the road and it's gonna be much more restrictive to get the water. Right now, there's no, there's lacking of curbs, it's gonna be several areas over here. The curb ends. Right above by the driveway and then over here, so this is all open. By putting a sidewalk in, it'll act like a curb and, and keep. The water, more of.
Is there a way to be at sea, like at street level on this subdivision, so I can visualize this? And then we'll go to public land, so if that is interesting, yeah.
With, with a sidewalk going in. For everything else, you're running from here to here, which is. That would drive, so, so. Would we put a catch basin in here and suck it back down here? There's a wall of water coming in the street here. That, the, the pits in the streets, a lot of water's going up against this. Burb, it's gonna flow.
Yeah, it's, it's flowing that way to this basin now.
Is there a catch basin?
There's a catch basin right here, it does work right there. And then, and then there's another one over here and what happens inside, on this side of the road. What water's coming down goes into this, to this basin, comes across and back out.
I'm in it.
I don't think this, you have to go and connect to the records.
But I do wanna, I wanted to see what this happens, I need to see, just give us a second here. So what am, what am I looking at here?
There's the existing.
Alright, so this existing house, trying to see what this road looks like, if, if you're talking about grain impaired drainage there.
See, you know, something, see the way the, the driveway is now. And you can see, you know, you don't have grades on it, you can see the, the driveway now slopes back into the lot.
Yeah.
So what we're proposing is to bring that up. Up above, one of the requirements to the kind of normal subdivision is that at street line, you gotta be eight tenths of a foot above gutter. So we're gonna be eight tenths of foot, which is just, just over nine inches above gutter. So that driveway now will not allow, which is now allowing to have water go backwards in there, that part of our subdivision grading is to cut that off.
I hope I'm not making it any like this. Getting a little further away.
See this, I'm trying to visualize this, I'm trying to visualize where we are on the street here.
Um, can I make another comment because we do have some new information for the record? So they just distributed to you at the beginning of the meeting. Before that we got. The, again, I'm missing yet from the engineer obtained by the mothers. And yeah, it doesn't, those comments yet. Also have to hand out comments that we received this afternoon from. Town engineer would be part of the drainage. So. They, I'm gonna make sure that they get those as well. And also come out to the commission, but I would suggest that. The discussion can be as necessary et cetera, but that staff as well as the applicant. Time to review both sets of comments and then ultimately we will carry it open so that for some. Items, issues and questions can be addressed once they are another invented on.
Alright, so we, we're leaving this home, so. But I do wanna, I do wanna get to the phone to have a seat, so. Anyone here who wants to address the construction, the application now, sometimes just move forward and say, can you address concerns?
So what I just had was the earlier about the comments.
Okay, yes, sir. You're on.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Steven Trinket of the licensed credit firm here. I reside in Southbury, Connecticut, been licensed this P since nineteen eighty eight. I had reviewed this application at Wetlands. And then the vast view, the current plans in front of this commission. My primary focus is on stormwater management. They have submitted a copy of the C D. My expertise is low impact development, which is about. Addressing runoff volumes and addressing water quality, water quality is not as big a concern with same family housing because we. Not a lot of directly connected purpose cover. But the, if you're gonna claim to reduce rates of runoff by infiltration, you need to have data, and we don't have that. We have no test pit data in the area of two underground Caltech systems. They're proposing using the. What's called a two eighty HD system, which is a plastic igloo for lack of a better term, surrounded. Both under, on the sides, on the top with cobblestone. It's twenty eight inches, it's two and twenty six and a half inches high. And then the applicant proposes a foot of stones, basically, you know. Thirty eight inches, you know, underground of these systems. Based on the, the comments of neighbors during wetlands and the commissions comment really are underwater. The soil on this site according to the, what's called web soil surveys, the old soil books. Years ago, now we're things online, are two types of soils that are, have an indicated seasonal groundwater table anywhere from the ground surface down to about thirty inch. So they're class C soils as they're known because they have a perch groundwater table, there's. An impermeable layer in a variable depth and the water sits on top of it, it's not like maniac sand and gravel where the water certainly drains down. So we have no testing for this, so we don't know if the water will actually infiltrate. So first off, that's a fatal problem in my professional opinion because if you don't understand soils, you can't find a stormwater management system. This doesn't work, especially when you're claiming production from peak rate of runoff by infiltration. Now, in the stormwater report, you know, four page and five page document, it's in the record. They use an inch and thirty percolation test, but there's no data on the plants or in the report where the tests were done, you know. When was it done, how deep was it done? If a, a per test which we use for septic is generally done in your open soil layer in eighteen to twenty four inches down, so definitely above a restricted layer. Because you're trying to infiltrate water as part of the septic system. In the case of stormwater infiltration, you need to do a test, not a per test, you do a double ring infiltration test. At or below the bottom of your proposed system because that's the soil there where the water's gonna go. If the ground surface is here. And yet the floor is the bottom of the system, this test, even if it's down here by the chair, doesn't do me any good to the floor level. And a double ring infiltration test also measures simply vertical movement of water. This is what we use in stormwater management. A per test, which the pulse hole basically goes both vertically and horizontally, so it overestimates. Vertical infiltration rate, but from a stormwater management standpoint, that's what we use, we use a vertical infiltration rate. While there is some lateral infiltration, even research academics, both Villanova University, North Carolina. Even research academics, both Villanova University, North Carolina and often New Hampshire Stormwater Center. Have not been able to really quantify the lateral infiltration from these practices. It's. It's, you know, you're dealing with mother nature. There's a lot of variables and there's not a simple answer pointed these guys. So we designed it based on a vertical rate, um knowing that some lateral may occur, can't really put a number to it. But in this case, again, we, you know, you've got a soil that could have a hard can there thirty inches down, bottom of the system is at least thirty-eight inch down. So it's likely into the seasonal groundwater table. If it is, then you've got the bottom of your system is already full of water. And you also cannot infiltrate into a saturated zone. Water will not move if there's already a pool of water. It will simply sit. Um additionally, the applicant use, there's two methods of stormwater management, the rational method. Uh which I learned way back the late seventies, I was still in college working. Phil Rayer engineer and even back then, uh we used T R fifty-five. In the early eighties, exchanged from the Soil Conservation Service. Uh back then, neither of these programs were in any kind of computers. This is all done annually and things. Uh T R fifty-five was actually quite tedious to do it manually. But rational method is only designed to give you a peak rate of runoff. You calculate what's called the time of concentration from the highest point of your watershed at the bottom. And basically what uh rational assumes is. You know, at zero time, there's no runoff at the time of concentration. I believe it's eleven and a half minutes in this analysis. That's the peak right up here. And then the time back down to zero is the same eleven and a half minutes. So you're taking basically a twenty-three minute rainstorm. Rainstorms are not twenty-three minutes. They are modeled in the T R fifty-five. This is a twenty-four hour event midnight to midnight. And it's, so when you take this short triangular hydrograph, it's not designed. For stormwater management of sizing these systems. It's only designed for peak rate. And the volume obviously in a triangle like this is way underestimated because of twenty-four hour event. Um so that's another issue with that. They you, in using their per test, they claim, well, that's an inch and thirty, which is two inches an hour infiltration rate. And therefore over twenty-four hours, you have this additional available storage line. That's not how it works. You have to model the system and uh what's called hydrocap is a program we use, you T R five. That you can put in your infiltration rate. And then your storm event with your previous cover and everything else. And it will tell you, you know, whether this system will infiltrate and then what discharge will be. In this particular case, the applicant does have an overflow pipe uh coming out that goes to daylight. Um as far as that goes, but you don't take this additional storage line by infiltration and say, therefore I'm matching it because. Uh they need about twenty-one hundred, uh twenty-one hundred sixty cubic feet of runoff for their increase in impermeable cover. Um. The uh call tech unit provides seven hundred and change and therefore they needed the infiltration of fourteen hundred cubic feet. To make the twenty-one hundred. So if the infiltration doesn't occur, you have an undersized system. And basically you're not going to get reductions in runoff that are being represented here. Um so there is a history of flooding in the neighborhood, um down gradient where that's all it knows how to do is run from uphill to downhill. And it will pond when it runs out of uh downhill area. Um so there's already a history of pumping, not only on this site, but the flooding on the data profits uh in the back. Part of the original subdivision and the proposal of the stormwater management system isn't going to make this condition any better. And it's likely going to make it worse because when you have an overflow outlet, like instead of overland flow, now you have a point discharge. Putting concentrated flow at a certain point. The same thing with the curtain drain or the French drain, which. Whether you have to sew the grade, both drains are designed really to pick up the groundwater. Um the surface water doesn't get a lot, especially when you have a limited area here um between the proposed drain and the road. But the effectiveness of a French traded curtain drain for lowering the groundwater on the downhill side is twenty-five feet, maybe thirty feet. After that rainfall falls beyond below that distance is going to reestablish groundwater table. So this French drain up near the road is not going to de-water the rest of that site. Thirty feet downhill, that groundwater is going to come back up. It's simply that's how the hydraulics of a drain works. It's not going to de-water it. So you're still going to have, you know, pretty high groundwater conditions. Um on the site as far as that goes. Um. Uh and again, you heard earlier that, you know, from the French drains, it's going to be again a discharge point. Will now get a point discharge. Right now, the flow comes from the road as overland flow brought the entire foundation of the property. With this drain, you're going to collect some of the water, but now you're going to put a pipe pointing at somebody else's property. And you know, some basic drainage laws, if I'm downhill, yeah, I get water from you as uphill. That's. Back to being downhill. However, you can't do something to my, to your property that causes a nuisance condition on mine, which would be a pipe discharge. Because now you're concentrating flow, which is going to cause more of an issue uh for me. So basically. In conclusion, this drainage system doesn't work as proposed. There's not enough data to know whether it would work if it's not modeled properly, of under standard engineering practices. To know that it's actually going to function. And I believe that the test bits here, if you're going to find high groundwater, this system simply will not function. Uh last comment is regarding the septic system by removing it. You know, you're not going to put water back in the ground. Well, that's true, but keep in mind, the only water that goes out of the septic system is what you use in the house. So it's not like the septic is taking help. It didn't water. Um. So and again, so if you're eliminating that, you know, uh under the code, actually, you don't have to dig it out. It's in the way you obviously can't even backfill it, but uh most of the time when we abandon an allegiance system, we literally just abandon it in the ground. You do pump the tank, crush it, you backfill it. Uh the well is either filled with sand or concrete uh as required by the health districts. And that's pretty much what you do when you go home. I mean, obviously you can take them out if you want to, but there's no requirement to do so. Uh but the bottom line is. You've got flooding already in the area, it's down gradient. This like the system is not going to function as intended. It's going to have additional increased flooding with downgrading owners are already experiencing uh problems. So thank you.
Thank you.
I asked you a question. Sure. Your, your, your water flow person, so I just. In the. In the rear properties, uh they were talking about water and on pond and and a rear property. And uh I noticed the right behind the. House that's there. Elevation is about ninety-nine feet. And it runs down to ninety-three towards the wetland, which is a long distance. So I'm assuming. That that. From that ninety-nine foot, that was elevation towards the wetland. Uh surface water is running that way. Uh the other one is from ninety-nine. Feet going down to ninety-four feet is where the. Our bodies been planted. With a burner. And if I remember this project. Sorry, I was dated and old by. I am old and there's three of us to remember it, but uh. Uh the elevation runs towards those are our varieties, which stopping that swell. From draining off the property. Uh basically draining down. To the subdivision. The previous subdivision through a spill. Uh so. It it sees that the. These swells, at least towards the. West uh is 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 being interrupted. Uh and the swell can be put in pretty good from the. The center of the lot towards the east. Uh. There is now sidewalks, dark dark sidewalks now with the curve. Uh now going in. And drain order towards catch basins towards the east. Uh. I'm assuming, and I'm not an engineer on this stuff, that the water is going to, some of that water on the street that flows towards the property now. Is going to be taken by that curve and moved down towards catch base. Uh. And the applicant saying that the French drain will catch the rest. Uh. I'm just.
The French drain, I believe it's the darker line here on the map. Um so the French drain, again, depending on the depth, will intercept shallow groundwater again. Uh from the uphill side of it. Uh. But again, you know, it'll convey, you know, down to a discharge point. But when you get twenty-five, thirty feet on the north side of the drain. The effectiveness of this strain pretty much disappears. So, you know, any rainfall, you know, from here back is going to reestablish the shallow groundwater table wherever it is. That's just the way water works. Um you know, if there's a curb along the road. Road uh that road runoff at least from half the road from the ground to the north side. Will run down to one of the two catch bases and then is conveyed out, you know, towards that wet area in the back. Uh but I don't know how effective the drain will be. In, you know, catching up a lot of water. Water on the road is already caught by the curb line. And bringing it down to the catch base and then, you know, what are you going to really catch? Current train. Uh you'll catch groundwater, obviously, but I'm not sure you get a lot of uh surface water. Um looking at the plan where the property line is relative, yes, the road where the sidewalk is clearly my professional opinion. Uh I know many communities, you know. Once they establish sidewalks, want them to continue. That can be put within the right way between the front property line and the roadway. And there should be, you know, with a, if you're doing a single forest main. And the water line, there should be ample room to run those in the shoulder or you have to run into the road. That's life in doing utilities. Uh but I I know uh water town, here's I worked on a project where. Uh you know, a developer did a project and wanted sidewalks. In the development and he, you know, his agreement with the town was he'll put them in when you get to my point. And, you know, the town built, I think, close to a mile of sidewalk out to his development and then he had to put in about two miles of sidewalk in his development. But, you know, it it connected, you know, it was bringing people down. That were north of where TAF school is, but bring them down now on a sidewalk is basically downtown border town. So there is room in my professional opinion, you know, to place a sidewalk there. And if you have to put utilities in the road. So are we? That's the fact of life. But if you're doing a single water line and a single forest main sewer, that's a lot different than a eight inch water line. Eight inch sand turn.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to address the question? Okay, sir.
Good evening. I'm David Lucick. I live at one oh six Brownstone Road, I sixteen dash five. Right here. Want to share a picture with you of our recent flooding event. You have flooding issues in this area here. And this is the conservation area. Conservation area butts up right against the house right there. It closed the bill. This is a recent flooding event. Shows the water coming down from here. This is where the house is going to be. This is where the water is.
Can we please pass that?
Sure.
Now along.
Yes.
Is this a problem for our records?
For your records, please. Yellow area, conservation area. The black area is where that house, maybe still have a house. And then water is what we see about six times here. I lived there for twenty-five years right here. I've seen it many, many. What it does, it comes off with this hill road over here. Big mountain up here goes to the fairgrounds. You have five storm drains. It's not here. They all dump right there. I mean, right there.
Sorry.
That's alright.
Second picture is what you see about six to nine months of the year in the backyard of a post house. It's like a swamp back there. Uh they are nothing. Um this was taken uh a member of last year, this picture here. Third picture I want to show you is the other side of post house. Which would be. Right in this area over here. So they have a landscaper that comes in, cuts the property every two weeks. This would be Memorial Day weekend. He couldn't cut the grass because it was so wet. It was sinking in there. I know I wouldn't want to buy this house. And I've been using my backyard for six to nine months. And have a flood come around the side. You can see how it's going to change. That would make twenty-six that picture.
Can I ask a question about one of the pictures, the water. Flow here on this uh picture number one, exhibit number one. Is this flowing toward your house or is this flowing to the road?
Yeah, what it does, it comes right here. It's coming down the side of the, right here where the post houses. It's coming from the street here. And then turning right here.
Okay, so this is flowing toward your house.
Yes.
Toward your house.
Yes. And we see that probably six times a year. You could have a rainstorm added yesterday. You see it quite often there. I can't see how that's going to change. I know I wouldn't want to buy a house to have those conditions there. The next picture is, uh they talked about cleaning the. Trees out. Of the conservation area. Well, they cleaned them out. And then they put them back in there again. So it's a picture taken about a month ago. All the trees are dumped back in there again. That's climbing up the conservation area. Well, what happened is they had to reach front of the house. They got all the shrubs down. It took them, it said it take a minute though. They don't, the condition area. So this makes the flooding even worse over there. So we talked about them taking them out. They did not take them out. As of today, this morning, they are still there.
So that's a picture from today.
That is a picture. Three weeks ago. Yeah, I just leave it as a record. I'm not going to file or anything. I just want to. Statement he made. You can keep them up. That would be everything I had. Any questions?
Uh no, I said.
Did you present the same uh pictures and stuff?
I did, I said, yeah. Doctor Jim Harbaugh, he's well aware, he was.
So it looks like there's a three there. Is that also elevated? Um like they said, the other side is.
Yeah. The tree area does not, these are, it's. Trees do not go that far. So that is an error. What you see on there? The old line is right here. And yes, it is elevated about three or four.
And does that? Save your property from flooding then?
It doesn't save it.
So you got flooding in your yard?
I got flooding in my yard. I got flooding in my basement. I got pictures here, but I'm. There's lots of flooding in here. I can't see how it's going to get better. And I'm worried if somebody buys this house, what's going to happen? For those. Flooding here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. And then we'll go to you next.
Yes, my name is Lori Buddy and I'm on the St. Well. I live on this side of the west. And. What, when I, I'm, I know these neighbors here, here and here. Um. I spoke to all of them. Uh David John, Dave just spoke with you now. These other neighbors also have flooding issues. Uh consistently in their basements. Their subpots are always going. I know that I've lived um. Most of my life in that house and I live there now. And the uh two springs ago. I had, um which I've never had in my life. My basement flooded with water. My basement flooded with water, about six to seven inches of water. And I'm on a hill, but it comes down from the mountain. You know, the outside is throwing fair, but a lot of those trees and vegetation, you know, when I was a kid, we climb up, sneak in. There. And, um, and there, um. But, you know, it was a jungle back then. You know, it's rocks and dead trees. You know, that are falling, but there's hardly any vegetation. And, um, there's a lot of tall grass at the back. Um, but, um, so a lot of that stuff that used to absorb the water just keeps coming down and. You know, like I said, my basement flooded, I had to have a sun pump put in and, um. Yeah, I, I was carrying five, five gallon buckets up, you know, at three in the morning, um, most of the day, most of the night. And then, um. Then I looked and I see the traffic going by, uh, by the field road, they're going real, real slow. And like my house, I'm looking and there was a punt basically on the bottom of my property. All, all down and through here, you know, and, um. This whole area, you know, my, my cousin, um, owned that house. His parents lived there. My aunt and uncle were, you know. Sixty years and. About three hundred days a year, you drive by that property and you'll see a sun pump. Pumping water and I'm saying in the dead of August. Right through here, a sun pump is pumping water out of that house across the driveway over here. Um, they've always had a flooding issue there. And, um, and it's not going to get any better with the, uh, the natural. The, uh, vegetation that no longer exists. And then especially because in construction of these houses, they're going to be eliminating. At least two hundred foot oak trees. Each of those uses about eleven thousand. Absorbs about eleven thousand gallon water during this, during the, um. Growing season and then there's, uh, you know, evergreens also, that would be about eighty feet. So, um, you know, it's going to just. That's, uh, I did some of my homework. Okay, um. I think that's about all I have to say. But I, I, I'm here because of the neighbors who are wonderful people that lived there for, you know, two decades. And, and Chris Przynski would be here, but is away and on vacation with his family. And, um, I told him that I would speak on this thing. He spoke at the last meeting, uh, and I was very disappointed when we all attended the inland wetlands commission. That, um, they heard all these objections, they heard statistics that were presented. And they just went ahead and rubber stamped it and it. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Yes.
Can I answer a question?
Yes.
The fit, the, uh, company that you're representing tonight vacation, do you know, have they ever had flooding in their backyard?
Yes, he always missed. Yes. He, he, um, he was, he was irate at. And he was storming in. And very upset. I'm sure he'll be at the next meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, yes.
Uh, my name is Stella, I'm the owner of the, of the, of this. This battle, uh, actually is taking place last four months. Everybody is blaming us for the water that they have on their property. But the property is sixty or seventy years old. And nobody bothered to go to Mr. Pulash and told him that they have problems. Because we are new in the town, everybody will blame us that they have water, that actually water was always there. We don't have street currents, so the water from the, from the mountain. Uh, of course, when you have higher level and lower level. Water always will be going to the lower level that our new neighbors they have and they blaming us for the water. We should actually blame, I don't know who, we don't have curb on the street. So the water is overflowing the street. We have only one water base, whatever you call the sketch on the side that. You know, doesn't really belongs to our, like, um, it's not on our, um. Section of the street that's on the section that our land ends and goes to the, um. Trees, uh, tree line. So unfortunately for all of us, we have water and if we won't do something, we will always have a water. So doesn't matter if we have only one house that we are remodeling or we will have three houses. The water, if we won't do something, the water always will be going from higher level to lower level. We are trying to preserve everybody. And if, um, Mr. Levchinsky, um, I'm sorry if I pronounce your name, uh, wrong. You had problem with the water in the basement, you will always have the water if we won't do something on the street level. Water always will be going from higher level to lower level. I'm maybe not educated in United States and I have accent. But we are trying to preserve everything and we are trying to do better for everybody, not only for us. Because I think that on last meetings was like who we are and that we won't be leaving there or how many properties I will have. Yes, I do have your properties. I'm working very hard in United States to achieve what we have. But my concern is that if we won't get help from the town. Even about the curb on the street, the water always will be going. Because the high, uh, the level of the street is higher than the level of our law. So doesn't matter if we will get permission to build two houses or we won't be able to build those houses. We will need help from the town about the curb. Because the curb maybe will catch some water and like everybody. Said, uh, that the water then will be going to the drain. Right now, it's no way that the water will be going to the town drain because everything is going to our property. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And, and just so I may ask, you said that you said that you were the owner of a property, which property?
Two thirty-five weather street path. That we discussed this, that it's, we are the biggest problem right now in this.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Is this a good rebuttal?
This is going to be continued.
And you mean into the. All right, I don't want to scare a lot of them. So let's make something clear. I, I think it's unfortunate that she feels that way. This is kind of personal. This is absolutely not personal. It's about our homes. It's about the water. I don't care that I have water before. I, as it goes on and what they're talking about. And where they're putting the water to is going to come back to my house, which means more water, not just any natural flow. Where we might have had some flooding. So they're putting it along here. Okay, the other, the other, um, catch basin is past this, so it's sitting over here. So if it makes it there. I hope I'm talking loud enough. If it makes it here, then it's coming back out. Right at this line, back onto this property. And again, into our backyard. So even the change, whether it can be made or not, of the water and how it travels. It's still ultimately is going to come back out here and end up in our yard. So there will be more water.
I'm sorry.
Lori, I don't, I don't know. This is a good question, for example, just an observation. When I think of catch bases and I think of water drainage, I think that the water goes to the catch basin. And then goes down to, it's just the pipe continues and carries it away. To whatever the source is, a stream or a group or whatever. Do we, do we know?
Read to the wet area and that's where the flow is. Above, you know, this, there are open, open.
It, it, it ends right here. That is a little tributary. That's the turn to the water goes this. Through the wet, but so, no, not a continuous pipe on the source.
So there's no pipe that it can be connected to further down the road that would take it to the Manabasics?
Then that would go all the way on. It's, that's the standard, it's, um. Storm drains. Well, they usually have a basin and a lot of pipe into the, well, extreme. They don't scare it. It's pretty standard what they, what the town.
That's like.
Extreme. So, see what's, what, you know. What's, what's happening here is, 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 was stated over here, this property, it's, it's a pretty large parcel of land, follow on. The wellness meeting, Jim Horrible asked the owner if, uh, they were clearing the woods out. Somebody's clearing the woods out above the back. And she said, no, that was my relatives. So, so possibly the reason she's not putting the woods up the backs of her. But this is what, what's basically happened. This is the drainage pit with the neighbor. I mean, the water, it, it, and when I say that. The front drain that we're talking about is the hill and type, the intent of that is to catch the water that's coming off the road. And I'd say most percentage of the water coming into that pot, the lots aren't that big. To carry the water that you're seeing puddling. Now, one of the things I got kind of crucified at the meeting when I was doing the wet list meeting was I surveyed them. I physically walked a lot and I saw no puddles on it. And they're all yelling at me. Well, only puddles. Well, if there were puddles in our boat, it seemed to go away. And I see those pictures there, particularly the first one that he had. Bonding from a couple of days ago.
I mean, it stands to reason that this commission could not. What do you think that's going to, they had one neighbor farm with another neighbor.
I understand.
And so that might be the biggest resolve that you guys are facing. But I don't know, it's not, now with that water, it finds its own path.
Well, well, what, what we're, what our intention is to, and I, again, is. Sidewalks can even help more. It's going to stop what majority of that water from coming over. And going into this, uh, going into the area. This area is going to probably. Over here, uh, we're, we're, we're not, we're, we're going to stop. And recourse the, the storm wash. Water is coming down through here because this, the water from over copper that comes in this way and then, you know, the hill coming down, it's all coming down the same. I mean, this past storm with people drainage, I had water in my basement. Everybody could not have. This, Andy, this picture.
It looks like a picture that I saw.
Just for the record, I believe this is the first picture he presented to us from last year.
A storm that Mr. Latchik gave me, this picture, when we started a year ago, he said, look. You're on more friendly basis. I can say, can you do something to help me? They showed me a picture of this, he gave you a copy, which I appreciate. And I appreciate his, uh, uh, activities or actions to help. Get his spot, uh, dryer and we think that what we're doing will help him. He won't hurt it. If he wants to continue with the flooding as it is now. Build this proposal, let that river flow through there. The river flows through there because in this so-called conservation, it should be called drainage. There are oaks or, uh, trees that were planted there in the fifties that fallen down. And this whole area is blocked off. And instead of going down this drainage area, it goes down this river. That he showed the picture of because he can't go to the other side. So next time around, we'll show pictures, show it at the wetlands commission. And that's why they took the action that they did. Wasn't because they only saw one side. Those trees, they're huge. They're like this. They're laying a crossway and there's no way for the water to go there. It can either go this way into the woods. And there's only a small channel. Once that fills up with water. It then sweeps across the lawn. And that's why he put, put this drainage system in here so it doesn't go further. But it exacerbates, he says, well, this flooding back there. Well, this berm that he put in, it's twenty-four inch berm. Also exacerbates the flooding here, just like this neighbor did. So this neighbor bought it, he should have a, a concern with the past neighbor saying, why did you put that? He doesn't have a flooding problem on his lot. He has a flooding problem because he sees water here and it may come down this, his way. So. As we, we signed with the best of the guys.
You know, with this, with, with the water comes out of here, it turns this way. It doesn't, it doesn't flow. Were, the, the, the other thing I didn't bring up, but original, original stone division, it was a twenty foot, uh, storm drainage. But when they did the next round in this thing, they did away with the core drainage bit and they abandoned. That's basically, he's been raining. So the intention for this was to, to keep this clean and maintain it. That's why the weather commission told us, you got to go clean that place out and watch you, we're going to monitor you. And get cleaned out so it's nice to work. That will help. But also by putting in sidewalks. And raising the grade on the road, you're going to stop. Majority of the water that's flushing down from these lots over here and the, from here and here. You're going to, all it is, it's just flushing. There's no way to stop it. There's no way to stop the water from going out.
I understand what you're saying, but, but I still have that concern. When we get to that end. You said the conservation agent is plugged up. And so the water is being forced onto the property. So now if you want to plug that conservation, that belongs to the other. Well, we have the Worthington Ridge Fire, what was that? Or is that the fire department as they said there? So now we're going to be flooding.
It was not, it's, it's a big area, but the big parts of it. It, it's basically going to go to where was originally intended, which is not doing.
I can see both sides of the issue, definitely one, definitely in front of you, there's a beaver dam situation going on. Everywhere making a problem for everybody. Um, but as I look in this, I know it was done legally way back when before we had. The area that was built. Have you ever considered, you know, maybe doing something like a retention pond or a water garden there to help mitigate some of the?
And it was not. Wasn't favorable in the commission to take that on. I even, I was even thinking about doing something over here, but they said. Our engineer, I said. A good, like I say. I, in my heart, I believe that once we can block the water. Off, from off the, the street runoff, it's like you said, it's the curb stops over here and it stops at the end of the driveway. There's no curbing here. And you can actually see the water coming down, just scrolling around like Andy said. Once we stop, the majority of the water from the road come out. These lot issues are going to be a lot less than. And, uh, as far as, uh, the neighbors are saying, when we stop it. We, we're going to stop it from flooding, puddling here, puddling here. It all eventually goes back over here, no matter what. So it's always going to go that way. We're not, we're not adding more to it. We're just, um. Getting it to do as we're properly out in the roads and into the storm drain system that the town put in here. These two basins and this one over in the drainage pipe. That's, that is our intent to get it to work the way this design.
I made, this map here is a drainage, the property show up. These are three lots. This is Mr. Latchik's lot. This is the pond, wetland, the ponding area that he has. Here's the other ponding area here. So you see, the water wants to go this way. And this is, this garage is sort of on a mound. And the water wants to go this way. So it's going that way anyways. If we shoot it around. It thinks at least it won't hit it. So it's now, the overall drainage, this catch basin up the hill, that is. Uh, Mrs. Blumay's drainage, I think sends eighteen or thirteen acre of water, water, storm water down into this. Goes through a pipe, where catch basin here, so a short piece of pipe and then goes into this drainage. Conservation East End. And then it is a natural channel that goes this way. We checked archival pictures from the state library and fifty years ago.
We checked archival pictures from the state library and fifty years ago. It went through here. So these neighbors aren't being surprised by new water going in there. It's an open channel. It's a open ditch. And the problem, so then it goes off this way down into the Patetic River. So it's just going this way. It just happens to go onto this lot. If this uh ditch. Here is shallow, it then forces it the water to go this way. And that's where you get the river and the flooding because it's conservation, it wants to shoot the water that way, but it's not able to. So this is not a new problem. This, the drainage system has been there for a long time. All we're trying to do is tweak it so that these neighbors and of course. These houses will have a drier lot. Okay, so uh the other thing is, I I Mr. Latch's concern was that I think it started because his basement, the point of the. Pumps. And then one of them stopped or whatever. But here's his house. This is the first floor and this is his basement. The bottom of the basement is six feet below that dish that I showed you. So that water from that ditch, any water. Uh be it flooding or not, will seep into his basement or wants to go with his basement. So be stuck with a, if he wants a dry basement, be stuck with a pump, no matter what we do here, because he's getting flooded now. And if he tried to drain his basement to the back, yeah, it's a little lower, but he still has four feet. So four feet of water or six feet of water are trying to get into his basement. So it has to have a sun pump. That's it. That's how, a lot of these homes have sun pumps. Same thing with the existing home has a sun pump. Because I don't know how well it is drained. So periodically it'll have water in there, but it's basically it's it's a lake. The water want to fill it in, right? So it's same thing here at all. You have to ask any of the neighbors. That's the problem. So.
We'll look, we'll, you know, we'll look at our comment, the 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 engineering stuff.
And then what I wanted to address, address was the soil conditions and testing. It's not just like went in there and whatever you want, it's all built, right? Um in two thousand and four, uh I presented a paper at the National Conference of Aerials in San Diego. I'm wrong, poker. So uh and the flow, there's two types of flow. It's posed by gravity or by the soaking action like a towel and the. But there is horizontal flow. So if you put a current drain here. It will, if this is drier, then, you know, our current drain here stops the water, but then it'll keep the water lower. Not as mentioned before, because. There is rainwater, it wants to pick up the water, so the the effect is less. But if you stop some of the water going through there, that's not water, water that won't go through there. So you're reducing it, you're not cheering it. And next time around, we'll go into all those details. So uh we'll be glad to address all these drainage issues. The soil issues here, the types of soil, it's a difficult soil. Ask any of the neighbors, they all have the same problem. So it's not like we're gonna, this subdivision is gonna make everybody's worse. No, they're gonna have that problem because it's a type of soil. It's a big hill, thirteen acres of water come down there, gotta handle it somehow, right?
Okay, terrific. Well, I thought it goes. But before we go on, yeah, that'll be interesting. I'm hearing trees or logs are blocking that waterway. Like how many trees and how long have they been there? All that time.
This, I guess, something does. You know.
The wind is saying, oh, it's cleaning.
And when I first, first day I was out surveying the owner. Said, can I go in there and clean that up? I said. Let's get the dimensions. I don't, don't I ever want to tell anybody to go in. But then when I read the regulations, it's only for cleaning. So yes, the answer is yeah. Town is very strategic. Their concern is this, that it's not. They, there there will be the concern was clean that out, you're not gonna get a building for that, but you get it right. We are there. So. It, you know, honestly speaking, if if we had a wetland permission, when this subdivision was done, probably be less houses in here.
Yeah.
Maury, I had a quick question for you. Um would it, you know, per view, just switch that from a conservation event to a drainage management, so the proper being being taken?
It exists as a conservation, you said?
Is an existing, yes.
It's an existing. So that's.
They have to abandon it.
It acts as a drainage. It acts as a drainage.
So, yeah, I think, oh, it's. Handled and worded is a matter of what's drafted as to whether or not it could be.
I'm just trying to be creative in how we can help deal with this water.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, I think we've got a lot to think about.
I feel like it's like a. My little bit because the brownstone, when I came in, this same conversation was happening that. Uh. And I discovered a couple of things that I would like to see. First of all, that. That's basically the thing though. Uh definitely, uh say a wall that it's part. With the Godfish eat markers and and markers that are for well-asked, that are standard markers that we have in town. So they're 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 put in the ground, there's level copper uh markers. And uh the total property owner, future property owner. That they can go in there and play or dump their uh grass club, the things that they were more about the flow no more or something. Uh but those markers should be put in there.
I I smiled, he's, I don't remember one major act. About a time.
Well, that that was the first project that I.
I'll put some other post up to put the marker down. I said, no, we don't want it. He goes. What? You move the country down and mark the picks how you can't country it though. But. The uh little wetland requirements is a fence. We have to put a fence with a gate for the wetland there. So that's gonna be talked out. Um. As far as the conservation easement right now, it's not pending. Maybe that can be a condition of approval that we we try to pin this thing and put markers along it.
Cause that whole line, I'll go in there, play around.
All right, probably some stuff that we have to consider because we're going to, we've got to get ready to just look at the information that we took today. It's not like that, so. It's great. All right, thank you. anyways. All right, okay. We're here, we're saving because.
We are working with Conservation Commission utilizing. That education fund to create. For existing areas. Of course, in this instance, where you have a subdivision, then. You know, we just roll that to the. To have to walk the area appropriately. So that. It's being mentioned to her to say that. Speaker, they've been ordered, it's been ordered. The conservation markers are back in business. So.
Terrific. Thank you. So we have a motion.
I think most.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. George. See, further discussion on this, all is a favor. Uh also, okay, moving on. And that would be, thank you everyone. And see you in two. And yeah, that that's all. All right, um the application for um Attorney Smith. Are in the general statutes. Now, this was actually postponed, so that's a bad key motion. So I'll make a motion, so show them to. Uh July twentieth. Thank you, Ms. George. We have a second area. So I mean, we have. If you want, I was gonna say, you want that. The second. So um to postpone, I didn't see too, also. I agree with the second. I was the second, it's all in favor. It was both of them. Is there, um the we already have the subdivision for both of us and. Spawning.
True. We can, and I just because I live, right? Yeah, I think I wanna make sure that you continue. Both uh.
The paper.
Amendment, yeah.
Exactly.
Make sure that.
And we got. So on a whole, this whole, who else? Probably seven, five, July. Uh I am B, which here just here, it's gonna be continued as well. And um. Okay, Mr. Sigmund had a motion on I M B, second, Miss Miller. Further discussion on the bigger. For the. For the housing. Smith. Esquire, I have C. And uh in one and C two. Just. Why dark? So you know. And this, this, to be sure, this. I'm not even done, but we did it right for C, C I. Make those two seconds of Mr. Hand. He seconded both.
Yes. I see.
I made a second motion, first C two, C I I, and I looked at him and I said. We all seconded. No, 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 okay. One, two. Okay, plan. And sorry, thank you. I know. And so I will entertain a motion to adjourn at nineteen minutes. Mr. Ogden, Ms. George, okay, further discussion. As a parent.
We thought we were into your.
I honestly thought we'd get out and do this. I thought like, why, everything started to fall.